For those keeping time, we're now half an hour behind schedule. So the next item is Criminal Rule 26.
Criminal Rule 26.
So you're all out of time.
Yeah.
Before we even started, so.
I mentioned 20.
Okay. Good evening. Um, I'm just gonna give you just a quick history. We've brought nearly all of our task force with us today. Couple of years ago, we were informed by the Supreme Court that Criminal Rule 26, of which you have a copy in front of you, was going to be implemented. It was originally going to be implemented in 2018. They realized that was not enough time, so they made January 2020 the time in which we would be kicking off the entire rule statewide. And so what we decided to do as a county is get a lot of the players and the main stakeholders together in February of 2018. And we had about 40 people there, including folks from Indianapolis and Grant County, which was one of the pilot counties that I know several of you were able to be there. Since that time, we have taken that large group and went it down into a small working group that's met just about every month and the last few months more than once a month to try to come up with an implementation plan for our county that suits the needs of our county. During that time, we've had, well, many of the task members have gone to other counties. I think Allen, Hamilton, Saint Joe County, we've taken people to. We've had the National Department of Justice come in and give a training to another large group. We've also had state stakeholders come up, as well as Grant County, come up and talk to us. They've made their task force members available to talk to ours. And so what we tried to do essentially is look at our resources and spend a lot of time talking about the resources that we have and the needs that we have and try to put together what we think is a plan and a program that's legitimate and workable for our needs as LaPorte County. Because if you look at the pilot counties, and I know Mr. Ira has done a great job of putting together a presentation, which he's gonna talk about. The pilot counties covered large counties of over 200,000, medium-sized counties of around 100,000, and then small counties of less than 100,000 people. So I've got the task force members here, if they would all stand up. Very good. We've got members from the prosecutor, the pretrial, and probation. We have Mr. Braji from Public Defender's Office, Mr. Ira from the probation officer, Judge Thorne from Superior Court Number Three, Ron Heeg from the Sheriff's Department, and we have prosecutor back here, as well as Dan Peck from Swanson Center. There's the majority of the folks here. So I'm gonna turn this over right now to Mr. Ira, so he can show you his presentation quickly.
Thank you. It should take less than a half hour. So we wanted to start out just by giving you a little background about Criminal Rule 26 and what it says. Basically, it says that if an arrestee doesn't present a substantial risk of flight or danger to self or others, the court should release the arrestee without money bail except when. And you can see the exceptions. And when determining that risk, Indiana has put together and has had for many years the Indiana Risk Assessment System. It's an actuarial risk assessment that was created by the University of Cincinnati and Dr. Ed Letessa. They launched it in Ohio, and then I was on the task force in Indiana that brought it here. So they converted it, normalized it to the population here in Indiana. And that is a picture of the pretrial risk assessment. Seven questions, but those seven questions have multiple questions, probative questions behind them that we go through when we do a risk assessment. So why are people in jail? Well, largely because they don't have the money to get out. And as you can see, 400 bucks might be a difficult and daunting task for a lot of people. And you can see through here, many detained people are accused for low-level nonviolent offenses. Three out of four criminal cases in state courts are for misdemeanors that, if proved, would result in fines and costs for less than a year in jail. Every county has bond schedules, and it's set a certain number for a certain crime. It doesn't look at who the person is, what their risk is. So in 2014, the Supreme Court authorized the development of the pretrial release pilot. And there are 10 counties. And you can see those. And they did, like Judge Friedman articulated, pick small, medium, and large to launch this program and have each of these groups. And each county had a task force or a group, a team, I guess, much like we've put together with law enforcement, with mental health, with probation, with judiciary, to try to come up with a plan. And it was more than just pretrial release. It was evidence-based decision-making processes throughout the whole criminal justice system. And as a result, pretrial came out of that. Now, I've put together, and it's in your packet, the information on each of these counties. I don't want to go through each of these, because we would be here for an hour. You can review that. But one of the things that we found interesting is that, and you'll notice throughout all these, you'll see that people receive money through IOX grants, and that's the Indiana Office of Court Services. Two years ago, when this was developed, they launched a grant solicitation. They reached out to the pilot counties and said, "Come and apply for money to launch your pretrial program." Pretty much every pilot county went ahead and tried to get some money, and a lot did. And then last year, they put out another bid to, you know, come try to get money. I called down to Indianapolis and said, "Hey, can I be part of this?" Because we were adopted as part of the texting system. That's a state program offered to pilot counties, and I was able to get LaPorte County to be one of those counties. Everybody who has a criminal case pending in LaPorte County gets a text five days before and one day before to remind them to come to court. So I said, "Well, since we're in that, can I get some of this pretrial money?" And they said, "No, it's just for the original pilots. But if there's leftover, we'll go ahead and let you know." They never let me know. Now, on top of that, there's Department of Corrections monies. The legislature put together a large pool of money, and they call it 1006, or J-RAC, or DOC money, to go back to communities and pay for programming and services for populations that are supervised locally rather than the Department of Corrections. So you'll see that grant money in there. We have applied for grant money through the Department of Corrections this year for two positions. While all of this was happening, we thought we'd know by budget hearing. However, the DOC changed their policy and are going with a calendar year rather than a fiscal year, so they extended our existing grant to 2019, and we won't know the result of this current application until September or October. So you can see, they were using probation, community corrections, in Hamilton County. They realized in very soon period of time that they needed to redesign their staffing because of the volume and the caseload. And I'm gonna go through this and not highlight each one of these, because it goes on and on and on, and there's a lot of data. And you guys, I know Ronald, I mean Michael, read through all this stuff and consume it. Saint Joe County, their positions were all grant-funded. Tipton County, 15,000. They increased caseload for the prosecutor, public defenders. They made it part-time, full-time. They didn't use any county funding, so I'm assuming they received 1006 or IOX grants. Porter County, read through hers. Melanie put together a really good review of Porter County's program. And as you can see, the jail officers paid out through IOX, community corrections grants, through the DOC, and you can run through that. Jefferson County, 32,000. They also used grants, community corrections grants. We got money from the IOX for the public defenders. A lot of the counties are using the IOX grants to pay for public defender appearances at all these hearings. Bartholomew, you can see what they went through with their numbers, and they added two pretrial officers paid for by grants. Grant County uses IOX probation fees, and they do use county general money. Stark County, they kind of use a little bit of everything as well. So what are we gonna look like in LaPorte County? We're planning on screening every arrest person, so everybody that gets arrested. We're gonna have pretrial staff available to do those risk assessments and bond reports on differing hours to try to get everybody screened, whether it's morning, evening, or night. One magistrate will conduct all arraignments daily, Monday through Friday, not on the weekends. Individuals in custody will have a public defender to provide meaningful representation to represent them and their custodial status. It's not about whether they're guilty or innocent at that point. It's about why should they be or not be in jail? Individuals who are released will be monitored. And right now, somebody can post a $50,000 cash bond for whatever charge it is and have no supervision. This would increase or include that kind of supervision. It will provide consistency, it'll be streamlined, it'll be fair, and we did pick up that we'll have quicker referrals to drug court and vet court through this process. This is the LaPorte County pretrial process. It kind of goes through what happens in a normal arrest. You can see that this laser doesn't work on that. But you can see that once they're arrested, there will be a, they'll be brought to the county jail, they will have the risk assessment done, they could be released at that point, at which point they go to the pretrial services officer for a risk assessment if they bond out automatically. And then ultimately, we'll come back for their arraignment. If they're still in custody, the court can make a decision at that point whether to release that person, detain that person. But it kind of adds that supervision, that assessment process. It'll give the courts much more information. They'll have a lot more knowledge about the background of the individual. One of the questions in the risk assessment is how many times has the person failed to appear in the past 24 months? That's a significant number when you start thinking about the purpose of bail is getting people back in court and not getting arrested again. So what are the costs? People who are held in jail lose their jobs, they fall behind in school, lose housing, lose custody of their kids, DCS costs added due to parents being incarcerated, public defender appointments because people lose jobs and can't afford a private attorney. Since just three days in jail makes some people more likely to be arrested on new charges, the current system makes communities less safe, and money-based systems release nearly half of the most dangerous defendants with little or no meaningful supervision. Now, I did a review of how much it costs to incarcerate somebody for a day in Department of Corrections. It's $53, $54. LaPorte County Jail, and that was through a 2017 DOC report. The jail told me just a week ago it was $32. And when we look at the budget I have in this packet that I gave you and I'll talk about in a minute, per person, it's $4.05 a day, which is less than a caramel macchiato. Now, it might be more than a like-up ente coffee, but it's less than a caramel macchiato at Starbucks. So without the two grant positions funded, that's what the total full budget is. Now, I want to incorporate that the Sheriff's Department, the public defender, the prosecutor, we included their three positions for 70,000 each in that number. So if those will not be part of this budget, they will come to you on their own budgets. But I just wanted you to see what the whole fiscal impact would be. And if we get the two grant positions, that's what it would look like. It's collaborative effort, like we discussed, the big team here with all the different people involved. And I think that's the last slide.
You want to ask now? Mr. Yagowski. So you mentioned here, real quick, that everybody coming in would do the risk assessment. Well, we already, your first statement says that a fourth of those people are eligible anyway. Those are not the ones you're doing the risk assessment, right? If you're not eligible, you're not eligible, right?
We'll still do a screening on everybody, whether they're eligible or not, because ultimately, it's gonna give the judge, looking at that case, whether it's a community corrections violation, a murder, a probation violation, whatever, we'll have that risk assessment in there so that at least they have more information.
But I'm hearing a lot of cost, it's unnecessary. You're gonna do this in a normal working procedure anyway. Why would you do it when you know this person's not even going to be eligible?
Again, the more information the court has, the better.
But you're gonna do that as a norm, you do these things on a normal basis. Prior to this rule, you were doing this stuff anyways. Why would we do, take the time on somebody that's not going to be eligible, 100%, not eligible? I don't understand. It makes no sense to me. That's quite a big cost thing when you have people that you're looking at.
Because some of those people, misdemeanors particularly in level six felonies, that's not gonna get done. If you're talking about major felonies, there will be a bond investigation ordered, or there will be a pre-sentence investigation ordered, simply because they're higher-level felonies or based on the particular sentence that you might be looking at. For a lot of misdemeanors, you're not gonna get this information. So they may bond out, and I may, and Judge Thorne would see them, but we still wouldn't have this information, because it just does not get done as it is. Under certain circumstances, for misdemeanors, low-level felonies, that information doesn't get done. It gets done for higher-level felonies and pre-sentence investigations.
More bond videos, it makes much sense that you spend that kind of money right now at this part. You have a person's available. We want to get these people that need to get out, out, but I don't want to see the purpose of, because you have plenty of opportunity under a normal procedure to investigate. What do you do it or not? That's another story. Judge, I understand it, but I still don't agree with it, that's all.
Sure.
If I get a chance, I think I could talk to Mr. Braji. Braji, you have a question, please?
Yeah, I'm not sure that we have the resources to do the assessments on all those people who fall outside of that. We were looking at numbers.
But you could do it at least on a day, on a daily basis. You would have to do it at midnight at 3 o'clock in the morning. You know, we don't even bog the system down further than it needs to be. It would make sense to me that you just do this on a normal, hey, I got you seven to three when I have the staff, or whatever time you have, not when you're doing your back turns or your other shifts. It just doesn't make sense.
I guess my concern would be if people are not being screened throughout the day, would that not then bog down the system?
That's something we need to look at. We don't, you can't sell us overnight. I would like to see the people that really need the help get them out, and then we work on the others as we see fit.
And you know, I mean, the numbers I gave you in here, the pretrial numbers, we got 319 sitting in jail, so.
It's still my opinion.
I understand.
I'd like to talk to Mr. Braji when you get it.
Does anybody have any other questions, or Mr. Ira? Do it for me. Mr. Braji?
Seems like I'm always up here.
Mr. Braji, you're always, you're our favorite every year for our budget hearings, and since we've, we kind of over exceeded ourselves the last time, you know, we put appropriate money back into your account because of the reasons.
So let me try to elaborate a little bit. First off, believe it or not, for the first time, the Public Defender Commission's made it easier on me. And here's why it's easier on me. Normally, all my public defenders have to have an experience level, and they have a caseload level. They have advised me that they do not have, for these positions, do not have to have an experience level, nor do they have a caseload limit, so that my people, frankly, I can hire them if I want, fresh out of law school. I'm not able to do that with my other people. They also have indicated that the positions are fully reimbursable. So there'll be a 50%, on my cost, there'll be a 50% return on the costs expended for us. But to elaborate a little bit more with what Steve had to say, here's the process. Once they get arrested, no matter whether it's a charge that is more serious sorts of misdemeanor charge, we will have to have people meet daily with them, because there's a 1 o'clock court, gonna be every day. And during a part of that, they will undertake the responsibility of advising them what the charges are, what they're constituted, what their rights are, and will then make the investigation as to bond matters. Now, everybody is bondable. And in some senses, risk assessment, even on more serious felonies, will go to the issue as to what the appropriate bond is for the people that are there, even if they're higher-level felonies. So that process will already take place. The idea that that information is available at the initial hearing, the first time they appear in front of the judge on a regular basis, it's not there. If they get arrested on a Tuesday, under normal circumstances, the way the process is working now, that information may not be available for weeks to us. NCIC reports, other, so we don't have that. When they do the risk assessment, that process will become immediately available to the public defender, will then be able to provide information to the magistrate, which will maybe provide a bondable defendant, or he might not ordinarily be bondable under the circumstances. So as far as what Steve and his people would do, then it's going to be a necessity for us to have any kind of meaningful help when we show up every day at 1 o'clock. So again, no matter what the charge is, whether it's a misdemeanor or it's a level-two felony, we will need that information to make the process. That then shortens the process for the judges later on, because they've had a lawyer. The lawyer's able to assess those things and hopefully express them in a cogent fashion to the judge, and that should relieve it. Now, we, you know, just to give you an illustration, the council came over, gave me two more positions. I'm in the second quarter, I'm already out. I have no, I can't appoint any more lawyers for the rest of June. We're hoping that this process is going to stop this. It's gotten out of hand. It's growing every day, and it's gonna be, so there may be, you know, we hope that there's gonna be a cost savings to our department down the road, because more people will be out and have to retain private attorneys. I don't know whether that's gonna happen or not, but that's the hope. So again, at least me, the speculation is, is that I'm gonna need three part-time people. 120,000 gross, 60,000 net. But in addition, I will then be able to assign those people to the reentry court, to the problem-solving court, to the veterans' court. There's gonna be, they're looking at a mental health court now, so I'll be able to put all those people into those spots to cover those for the judges without any additional costs.
So my question, Mr. Braji, I appreciate your camera on it, but if you're looking at your normal budget, if the council doesn't ask you to buy microphones and so on and so forth, your funds have increased over the years, and it's something that we really can't touch. With this, because I did ask this question with Judge, is there a way to fund one of, say, if we do have three positions, to hire somebody through that? Because one of the counties actually did.
Through the supplemental fund you're talking about?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Well, they, you know, this, they haven't adapted downstate to this Rule 26 and how it's gonna affect. The current statement for me is, it can only be used for extraordinary expenses and not regularly budgeted positions. So, you know, the short answer is no, but they, I was surprised when they told me that we didn't have to have experience or caseload levels for these positions. So I mean, I'll make that inquiry, but.
Because I could see a lot of the, dealing with a lot of those smaller counties, they just don't have the budget to do this. And I see a couple of them, if you looked at them, actually was using your office basically to help out.
Yeah.
So I would think that if this was.
Well, yeah, you know, see, a lot of the other counties, and a good deal of them, don't have a system like we have in LaPorte County, where we have zero dollars applied towards benefits. And when I say benefits, I'm not just talking about health and pension. I'm talking about stationary and phones, and, you know, we don't have any of those assessed. So a lot of times, they may use those funds for those type of things within the budget themselves. So we have, we have just gross dollars. The public defender has to pay for those things out of his own, out of his own pocket.
Thank you, sir.
Anything else I can answer?
No?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Does anybody have any other?
If I could follow up on appointments for Braji made, and I was sitting here thinking about, Mark, when you raised the question, why screen people to whom the program doesn't apply?
At that particular moment?
I understand.
Not, that is a general question.
And I think there's kind of a misconception that for those areas of on probation, pending charges, those categories.
Quite risky.
Yeah, that they're not in the program, but they're still subject to bond. And Mr. Braji made that point. He said everybody's bondable. And so it's not just a matter of looking at a group and saying, well, these people are in the program and these people are not. In the program, if you use that terminology, really means release without a cash bond at the front end, in all likelihood. So the person that does it is not in the program, somebody who's on probation when they're arrested. They're not gonna be released on their own recognizance, but they're gonna appear in front of a judge. And when they do, they're entitled to have bonds set. And that's, and that's where that information is useful to us.
Judge, correct me, I don't have no problem with that, but if you read, which I have, you have two, of course, Rule Criminal Rule 26 doesn't apply to those people. We, the county, are only paying for the people that can get out. We're not here to try to fix the other problems right now. We're gonna try, so in other words, I'm trying to get the cost down so that we don't have to hire a whole lot of extra people right now until we get this thing running. So right now, if you take half the cases that are eligible for this, I believe right now that's what we should be looking at, because that's all that this rule applies to. It doesn't apply to a murderer. It only applies to the people that are eligible for this.
Yeah, but the solution.
I got that, please. We can't sell everything overnight, and we can't just hire a bunch of people.
Here's the other thing, if you say, and just for the sake of argument, say, half the people don't apply, we don't need to do anything with them, we can.
Presently, not, I never, like it looks.
I'm not putting words in your mouth. But let's just say, half the people we don't need to do anything with right now.
Yes, sir.
That doesn't mean that half of the extra staff that you have to put on to deal with the other half, you can cut in half.
I didn't say that. Oh, we have to figure out how we hire.
Okay, I understand, I agree. And I think as imaginative as we can be on how to cover these things is great, and that's, that's why.
There's gonna be a lot of issues, because you can see on those counties, a lot of counties couldn't afford it, and they've used different means of doing it. We can't rely on those Piscata grants, because we have some, even those counties that were the chosen few. We have to look at the idea, how do we implement it the most effective way? The most effective way is with rule, this rule it says, it's only for the people that are eligible for the count. Now, can we take it at the present time?
But again, that's, that's taking a myopic view of.
Well, I have to, literally, because nobody gave us money to start the program.
Nobody gave anybody money. That's a problem.
Well, they picked 10 color counties, they got away with something.
They got, but there's 92 counties.
But we did not, and so we have to look at a more effective way to start this program and to start the program. I'm saying that we can't get to some point, but how do we start the program?
And, and, and none of us is saying that what you saw there is, you know, we fall on our sword over it, and that's the end of it.
Right.
It's what we projected, that we think is necessary to set up the program the way we think is gonna be most effective.
As you can see, I'm already trying to find a different way. I'm trying to say, maybe we can get some.
The more, the more angles that it's looked at, the more likely we're gonna find. Nobody has, I'm paying taxes too.
And just so the council knows, this is an item that's gonna come up during budget hearings. So, and at that time, we, there's actually two options that we have. One is to put it, try and find a way to get it in the budget, or the other option would be, would be to try and fund it, do some voter approval or whatever, and look at, maybe fund it at the beginning of next year, and get it, making it work that way, and then working it, seeing how it actually works for a year, and then working it in the 2020 budget. So in other words, because right now, there's a lot of unanswered, I mean.
There's a lot of speculation.
We're projecting.
We're all speculating.
Right. So the thought on that one would be is, we'd have some time under our rope, we'd have maybe a better idea if the prosecutor can get by with a part-time person versus a full-time person and do things like that.
And one last thing.
Yes.
And then also the data that's been collected, we might be able to get something from that, because.
The thing that we've, every county we've gone to, the pilot counties that have implemented, one of the things they've always stressed is, we started here, and we've come to here. And that doesn't necessarily mean less money and more money spent, it just means they've had to adapt and.
So what they thought they actually needed to work.
Right.
May not have been, and then maybe they overestimated, they underestimated. So this, this isn't something that's coming up on our agenda one of the next meetings. This is gonna be coming up in budget hearings next month.
And again, we'll know about the grants in September or October, what might be forthcoming to us. So maybe like you was talking about for budget, we might look for some funds as a means of support.
And that doesn't necessarily mean less money and more money spent, it just means they've had to adapt, and.
So what they thought they actually needed to work.
Right. And then maybe they overestimated it, underestimated it.
So this, this isn't something that's coming up on our agenda one of the next meetings, this is going to be coming up in budget hearings next month.
Yeah. And again, we'll know about the grants in September or October, what might be forthcoming to us. So maybe like you was talking about for budget, we might look for some funds as a means of support at the first of the year. Let me ask you this real quick, too. What if, what if we don't do this? I mean, I, Criminal Rule 26, what are the ramifications, I guess, for a county that says, "We can't do it"?
There's no short answer to that, and nobody knows. Is the Supreme Court going to hold us all in contempt and put us in jail? I don't think that's going to happen. I think there's going to, there's going to come a point at which the courts and/or the legislature understands, money has to come from someplace. If the court wants this to happen, it's got to come from someplace. The grant money that was available to 10 counties, now you're going to multiply that by nine, and, you know, it's not there now. So something's, something's going to have to get somewhere down the line. So to say, the Supreme Court has said, "Well, if you don't do this, you know, we'll disbar you all," well, no, they haven't done that. The other risk, and the one that, that many states have experienced, is litigation. And this litigation's been successful, there's one attorney in particular, and he's made a very nice living off of this, speaking to the constitutionality of bail bond, or cash bonds, bond schedules and so forth. I think the Supreme Court probably has thought about that in enacting this rule. I think it's more a matter of, and by the way, this is, this trend is national, we're, don't think Indiana's the first state, we're not the first state to do much of anything, and this isn't one of them. It's being done all over the place, but I think that's part of it, and I think that's part of what the motivation was. So, you know, am I standing up here saying, "Boy, if you don't appropriate all this money, you're going to get sued and it's going to cost you more"? I'm not threatening that, but it's happened. You should be aware of that.
You're going to jail.
They usually put council people in, join themselves, that they find it works better that way.
I appoint Mr. Santana, Mr. Yudowski.
Can we pre-flower for a minute?
It's that folks that always gets the dirty work.
However, when you're taken into custody, we'll do a pretrial evaluation, and we'll know exactly how to deal with you.
Good comeback.
Anything else?
That's it. Any other questions?
Nope.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming.
We're going to take a quick, three-minute recess, and then we're going to come back and have our special meeting.